Okay, we are going to call our public hearing to order. This is case 2023-17MA. Jeff, you want to run through it for us, please?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. At 4751 Luxe Boulevard at the corner of Happiness Way and Kenwood Road, the applicant Kenwood SCA Two Inc. seeks a major adjustment to case 2018-12P2. In that case, a six-story office building was proposed but is no longer feasible. Known as the Encore at Kenwood, the applicant proposes a mixed-use, ten-story building with the following uses. On ground floor one, there'll be retail and associated purposes. On floors two and three, if you can see my cursor, floors two and three will be office space. It's 37,000 square feet. And floors four through 10, which are these upper floors, residential apartments, there'd be 133 proposed residential apartments, 98 one-bedroom units, 21 two-bedroom, and 14 three-bedroom units. In terms of the future land use plan, the subject property is designated as mixed-use. The proposed Encore is consistent with the Township's future land use plan. And the subject property is right here. This rendering is showing the height of the proposed Encore at 145 feet, or 145 and a half feet. If you can see, the approved office building from 2018 was 100 feet, 100 and a half feet. Just in comparison, the Kenwood collection is 216.83 feet tall. In terms of site arrangement, they're at the corner of Happiness in Kenwood. The Encore is situated in the same location as the 2018 approved office building with identical setbacks. The parking count is sufficient to satisfy the zoning resolution's requirement. Under the Encore, there is a 45 parking space below grade parking garage that's under the Encore. In the context of Encore, a trip generation study was conducted which showed a negligible increase of traffic. In addition, in coordination with TEC, recently, an origin destination study monitoring traffic was employed which showed that there was not an increase in traffic. In terms of building materials, a diverse array of building materials are presented. If you can see my cursor here, on floors one to three, in this kind of beige area, it's masonry. There's a balcony here and a balcony here. Above those two first-floor balconies, there's what's called a glass curtain wall system, which is this bank of windows here. The black above that from floors four through 10 is a metal cladding product. And in between the glass on floors two and three, it's metal cladding in between the glass. On floors four through 10, the kind of the beige and the white, that is a hardy board product. In the stress, it is not Eiffel's product. And this next slide just shows some of the other materials. You know, for example, again, the high-quality brick masonry on floors one to three. In terms of wall signs, the wall signs on the Encore generally measure 27 feet by four feet with some variation. On the north, so this is the north elevation here, it faces Happiness Way, there are four wall signs. On the east elevation, which is right here, facing Kenwood Road towards the town center, there are another four wall signs proposed. On the south elevation, in the direction of Montgomery Road towards 71, there are two wall signs proposed. The larger of the two is, it measures five feet by 33 feet. It's this kind of a vertical sign here that says Aspire. And then on the west elevation facing Aspire, there are two wall signs proposed, one on the first floor and one on the second floor. In terms of monument signage, there were two monument signs proposed, but the zoning commission only recommended to include one monument sign. The monument sign that the zoning commission recommended to keep was this monument sign, if you can see my cursor up at the top of where the Encore is, in front of the Encore. And that sign measures 10 and a half feet wide, three and a half feet deep, six feet tall with a masonry base, and it would be situated at the property line. The monument sign that the zoning commission elected not to recommend was right here, and that one measured 14 feet wide, three and a half feet deep, six feet tall. It would be sighted at the property line. In terms of outside agency comments, there were no agencies that commented that there was a concern with a given utility. The Sycamore Township Fire Department did request the following, that the Encore be permitted as a high-rise structure, that one gurney-sized elevator be provided from the parking garage to the penthouse, and three, the building will be designed to integrate a radio repeating system if required by testing after construction. And these elements are included in a condition, which will be following next. As for the recommendation, the following are recommended conditions, conditions levied by the zoning commission that have been satisfied to date have not been included. So the recommendation, staff recommends approval of the major adjustment to the PUD with the following conditions. One, all conditions of case 2018-12P2 are in full force and effect unless modified by this case. Two, the wall sign plan shall conform to the site arrangement dimensions as shown or amended. Three, one monument sign is permitted on the subject property in front of the Encore on the Kenwood Road elevation. The monument sign must have a masonry base and can be set back zero feet from the property line. The maximum size of the monument sign may be 10 feet wide, three and a half feet deep, and six feet tall. Four, on the western elevation, no wall sign shall be sighted above the third floor, and that's the western elevation, is the elevation facing the Aspire. Five, digital signs, or otherwise known as EMC, shall not be used as wall signs or monument signs for the subject property. Six, all lighting associated with the Encore shall conform to the zoning resolution standard of .5-foot candles at the property line. Seven, ground floor one of Encore may be used for any combination of office, retail, or restaurant uses. Eight, Encore shall be, this is the fire, fire one, Encore shall be designed and permitted as a high-rise structure and follow all relevant high-rise building and fire code requirements. Encore shall be designed to integrate a radio repeating system if required by testing prior to consideration of a township or county, CEO or final. At least one elevator from the garage to the penthouse size to accommodate an EMS gurney shall be incorporated into the Encore project. All elements related to this condition, unless specifically stated otherwise, shall be incorporated into plans prior to the issuance of the zoning certificates. Nine, all building materials shall comply with the representations made in this case. And 10, all landscaping on the 7.16 acre subject property shall be maintained in healthy condition. With that, if there's any questions, these are just two renderings of the proposed Encore building. The left rendering is, it's showing the southeast corner. And note, you can see, it's kind of a skinny side, you can see the Aspire behind it. And then the other rendering is, it's at the corner of, be the rendering at the corner of the Happiness in Kenwood Road. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Do you have any questions yet?
I know that from the zoning meeting, there were some questions as it related to height, helicopter clearance, what have you. Can you speak a little bit to that? I think that there was some conversation with some various entities that may bring some clarity to that situation.
Yes, thank you. In review of the federal regulations, specifically, it's 14 Code of Federal Regulation, CFR 77.9A, buildings that are under 200 feet tall are not regulated by the FAA. It's a private helipad that does not have a, I guess it's called an instrument line-of-sight procedure, so none of the, none of the requirements noted in 14 CFR 77.9 trigger FAA comment.
I might just add to that, that I've had conversations with the applicant as well as Michael Kramer, president of the Jewish Hospital, and his concern was that the crane may exceed, may create issues when they are building it, they're going to bring a big crane in. And I was advised by the applicant after he did some research that the crane, when they hire a contractor, the contractor will hire a subcontractor, which should be the crane contractor, and they will come in and they have to meet all FAA requirements. So they will have to report to the FAA prior to putting the crane up, telling them where it is, how high it's going to be. And I think Michael Kramer was satisfied with that information, so I don't think that that's going to be an issue with the, with any kind of construction.
Jeff, the only thing I have is, I know we asked the chief to be here tonight, our chief Penny, but he was out of town. I saw the comments that were in your staff report. Did Chief Penny have any other comments about this?
Thanks for the question, Mr. Kellums. At the zoning commission hearing, Chief Penny did make some comments. This is from the minutes from that case. It notes, "Chief Penny explained the importance of Encore being built under the high-rise code. With Encore being a high-rise, it was fully, is fully sprinkled and would include essential fire equipment such as hose cabinets and the stairwells, fire pumps, et cetera. Chief Penny noted that the Encore, including this equipment in the design, the building would be well positioned from a fire safety perspective. He noted that the fire department would be the manpower to operate the equipment that would be built into the building. Chief Penny noted that as long as the building is within fire code and there's access around the, around it for a fire truck to maneuver, which there is, that it is a safe building."
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? From the staff report, Exhibit A is an engineering report from TEC Engineering. We are fortunate to have Ed Williams here tonight. Ed, I know he has got to take another, go to another meeting, so I'm going to have him come up and just talk briefly about the, about the traffic study.
Shall I swear a minute?
Yes.
Anybody who's going to testify in this public hearing tonight, can I raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give in this public hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I do. I do.
Thank you.
Just give us your name and address for the record.
Ed Williams with TEC Engineering, 7288 Central Park Boulevard, Mason, Ohio 45040. So we did a study a couple of years ago, right when I believe Happiness Way was open, and some of the development had occurred. And additionally, we originally looked at the traffic impact study that was done back in 2018-ish, 19, somewhere in there. So the study we did, we looked at the revised generation rates based on the residential compared to the original usage, and the numbers that were reported by the applicant are correct. So those generation rates were right, they used the correct generation rates, the numbers are minimal. And then we looked at the distribution that was from the original study, which had, you know, a percentage, you know, as they say, from Galworth Road from the west, which is what we would say, okay, that is the potential for cut through. That doesn't mean that they are, but that means the potential. And that number that comes from Galworth Road was 10% at the time. And so if you take the additional traffic that they were saying was generated and say that, okay, 10% is coming from there, that is, you know, out of the 20, I believe it was 26 in the PM peak, so that is essentially three cars from that direction. So then we went back and we recounted the intersection of Happiness and Frolic, which would be the way that those, that traffic would, would cut through. And so back in 2022, we did a 24-hour count and we did a count for the peak hour, and we did that count again, and the counts are effectively the same number as we had two years ago, they're the same number today. It's, you know, 10 cars turning right, two cars going through, a very, very small number of cars that traverse that intersection during the peak, and even during the day, it's a pretty small number. So then, you know, we went a step further and back. When we did the study in 2022, we looked at origin destination data, which is data that's available, that you can isolate and look at how people are driving and where they're coming from and going to. So we looked at that origin destination data. We isolated specifically the people coming from the apartment complex to see which way they were going, and the data says that they are effectively all coming from Kenwood Road. And so I think that was the result when we looked at this two years ago, and that's still the result from the data today. And combined with the really, as I said, the very similar count from previous and very, very low traffic numbers, you know, so that is what is presented in the report.
Okay. Any questions?
No, it sounds like you're essentially saying that this study is consistent with the one you did in '22.
Correct.
And is this consistent with yet a third study? No.
So basically what I'm saying is, the traffic impact study, the numbers that were in that impact study and the revised numbers presented by the applicant are correct.
I see.
I'm saying that.
So they align, there aren't discrepancies between the two different entities studying the same scenario.
Correct. And then the volumes at that intersection have not increased in the past two years, and they were already very, very low.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions to answer?
I don't think so.
I'm good. Ed, thank you for coming. I know you've got another meeting.
Yes, thank you. Have a good evening.
Next up, we have the applicant. Greg, you want to come up and give us a few words?
Yes, Greg Fusaro with CIG Communities. So I want to just kind of give a little summary based on the report that Jeff had made here, and I think the key issues that we talked about in terms of the, the traffic, I think has always been a big issue from day one, and it's important to note that the actual number of cars that will have in this development versus a development that was primarily office will be almost identical. It's actually less usage per thousand, but with more residential, we generally will have, you know, a few more cars that are in, are there at the times of the day when office users would be there. So without that office, obviously, it frees up some of those spaces for our residential use. There's not as much, we had figured a 25% shared use, and that's actually less when we're doing primarily multifamily. So the actual usage in the garage will be about the same, but it's because there's not as much overlap that works between office and multifamily versus multifamily, multifamily. The issues with respect to the building itself and the FAA and the crane, as Mr. Weedman said, crane company has to get their permits through the county, subject to any FAA requirements that are made with respect to any crane that goes up anywhere in the city. So that's a pretty standard operating procedure. The other point I think that's relevant for that is that the crane will be on the inside part of the building, so the building forms an L, crane will be on the inside of that L, so it's probably not likely even that the boom would, would stretch over Happiness Way. I know that was a concern of the hospital as well with the heliport. Other than that, I think, you know, the great thing about this is that, you know, we're not creating more traffic than we had submitted in the original proposal, which was one of the primary issues with the neighbors. The building itself, I think, is a great-looking building, and we're really excited about it. It adds more residents, more shoppers, more wage earners to the township's economic base. We're excited about the prospect of having sort of semi-high-rise, mid-rise living opportunities here in Kenwood that really otherwise don't exist. And I think we'll see a lot of interest from downsizers, whether it's coming out of Indian Hill or Kenwood, Montgomery, whatever it might be, for this type of product. This particular building will utilize the amenity package that we have in the first phase of the building, and we actually oversize some of the amenities in that building because we thought that we were going to offer memberships for office users. So it actually worked out. We overbuilt some of those spaces, particularly the fitness center, so that'll now be available to the residents in this building. We'll also have a rooftop deck and an amenity room on the top of the building, and including a little dog walk up there, so that people that are in that larger building won't have to come down to ground level if they want to walk their dog at any hour of the day or night. So I think that's, that's a real advantage as well. The other thing that I think is really good is that on the first floor, we're hoping to have two restaurants or entertainment venues, and I think that, you know, certainly, those are certainly opportunities that are needed, I think, still in the Kenwood area. It'd be good to have some additional diversity in terms of restaurant offerings, so we're hoping that, that we're able to do that. And then, of course, we have two levels of office space, which will certainly be a challenge, but we're committed to do that. And it's certainly under consideration now that we might move our offices into that space as well. So that's kind of an overview. Any questions that I can answer?
Questions?
So I would assume one of the reasons why the additional multifamily here, I would assume that the project pond, the Aspire project has been, you would characterize that as a success?
It's been extremely successful. We've been very fortunate. Obviously, there hasn't been much development in Kenwood of multifamily, and it's a great location, it's easy to get to downtown, the number of entertainment, shopping options that are here are plentiful, and it makes it a very desirable place to be.
Questions? Any questions? Okay, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, next we're going to hear from any of the residents who want to speak to this. There was a signup sheet out there. First person on the list is Mark Brown.
I'm live.
Mark, have you been sworn in?
I do.
Anybody, let me call these names out real quick, and if you have not been sworn in, you can all stand up and get it done at the same time. It'd be Mark Brown, Emily Pendella.
I got sworn in.
You got sworn in, okay. Greg was on there, he's already sworn in. Kathy Schumaker?
I'm off.
You're not speaking? Okay. Jean Bresnan?
I don't think I'll speak.
You're not speaking? Okay. I can't read the next one. Looks like maybe Jim.
That's probably me.
Okay.
Can I only speak, or can I ask questions?
You can speak. Do you, do you, do you want to speak during the public hearing? You can certainly post questions, I'm not sure we have answers for you right here, but okay, okay, so you got two. And then Linda Engelhardt? Are you, are you going to speak? Have you, have you been sworn in?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So just the two of you, if you'll stand up and he'll swear you, Larry will swear.
Stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give in this public hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
Yes.
Okay, Mark, you're up.
My only really...
Hey, Mark, if you can come to the podium here and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Mark Brown. I live at 4610 Largo Drive. So I kind of live on the other side of the neighborhood, towards the Deer Park side, so I don't have a really big complaint about the building being there, other than the hype of it. Because currently, when I stand on my front porch, I'm looking at a six-story building over on Montgomery Road, the Redstone, which I went to a hearing a long time ago about that building, and they said it would never be more than three stories high. And so I have to look at that building, and if this building goes up to 10 floors, I'll be looking at it when I'm sitting on my back deck. So that's my really only complaint. I know this is becoming an urban area, and our little neighborhood started to get squeezed in on two sides, but that's, that's my only really complaint about the whole thing. I have no problem with the Aspire apartment building. I don't see a big increase in traffic, probably more so on the Deer Park side. I do notice there's more traffic on the Deer Park side of my neighborhood, there is probably on Montgomery coming out of Happiness Way or Frolic, but that's my only observation on that, but so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next up is Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Pendella, and I live at 7934 Frolic Drive, and I'm a very new member of Sycamore Township. My husband and I purchased our house in June when Aspire already existed, and then we heard about this project, and like, we can see Aspire from our backyard, which isn't too big of a deal because we have giant trees, which is nice, but I don't like that this, like, I'm going to be able to see three stories of this from my house. I walk my little dog, Petunia, like, multiple times a day, and I love that our neighborhood back there is like, we still get all the great things of being in a city in Sycamore Township with like, being able to go out shopping, and then you come back into our little neighborhood, and it's like an oasis. It's quiet back there, and I don't really want this 10-story building to change that. And I'm also worried about the construction of this building and how it's going to affect potentially my summer in my backyard or me walking my dog. I'm also an avid runner. I run all times of night through Sycamore Township, and I don't like, I want to be able to get in and out of my neighborhood safely without worrying about construction. So, and I also know when they built Aspire, some of the residents got like a stipend for like the inconvenience. We want to know if like, there's going to be any, this passes through and it starts getting built, if there is going to be any reimbursement for how this could affect our property values and all this extra stuff, inconvenience fees and things like that. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. The next person on the list is Kathy Schumaker. I think you said you did not want to speak, is that right, Kathy? No, okay. Jean, you don't want to speak? This looks like Jim, you're up.
Good evening. My name's James Moskowitz. I live at 4888 Bayberry Drive. So I'm here because I have actually more questions rather than a speech, and so I guess my first question, which I hope you all would know off the top of your head, is whether the township is financially sound or we're struggling.
I guess I'll answer that. We are actually very sound.
That's, that's what I thought.
We practice, we practice good business practices here to ensure that we keep your taxes low and your services high. So yeah, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay. My second question is whether the current project that's there now, the hotel and the apartment building, is fully occupied, whether both of those are fully occupied.
I can't answer that, but I, I think that the apartments are fully occupied, is that correct?
Yep. So was, and forgive me, I didn't quite understand when they were talking about the traffic studies. I heard one was done in '22. Was there one done this year, or at the end of '23 and '24?
Yes, there was one that was just done.
Okay, and I heard a lot of talk about Happiness Way and Frolic. Did the study also include what happens on Kenwood Road going up to Montgomery Road? Because I didn't hear that.
I don't believe, this was, this study, this study was only done for the, for the back neighborhood.
Okay, so I think the greatest concern that I have, and that I have heard people voice, is what happens on Kenwood Road. Kenwood Road between Galworth Road and Kenwood Road between Galbraith Road and Montgomery Road is a mess. It's a mess almost every day, especially during rush hour, especially during Christmas. When you get up just past the Aspire, that's a nightmare. I don't know why, but the lane that turns right is always backed up. And that, to me, seems to be one of the biggest impacts that, I guess, hasn't been looked at yet. When we're talking about how this is going to impact traffic on Galbraith Road or back in the neighborhoods, I understand that, and that's very important, especially for the people who live back there. But the rest of us who don't, no offense, sorry, we don't care so much about that. We care about what's going on in the main thoroughfare, which, if there hasn't been a study done on how it's going to impact those areas, then I don't know how this council could go forward with an approval. I would think that would be very important because it's not getting better. So it just seems to me like in the last 10 years, a lot of effort has been made to create more and more housing and business, and it is changing the complexion of this area. And I know Sycamore Township is big, and I'm kind of in this smaller area around Kenwood, but it's changing the complexion. And the more people you add in here, you are changing the complexion of this. You are adding people. I don't know how it would be possible, with all these new people moving in, that there would be no change in traffic. And maybe I misunderstood it. Maybe it was, there was no change in the projected versus what's actually happening. But I would think if you add more people in with cars, you get more traffic. So again, my concern, I guess, is more focused on the main thoroughfare of Kenwood. And it's bad, and it does impact going all the way up towards Blue Ash and Kenwood because just getting out of my neighborhood, for instance, has always been difficult. And honestly, it has gotten worse since I've gotten there. It's harder and harder to get out of my neighborhood. I can only imagine that the traffic added by more people there, living there and working there, is going to add to that. And so if you are thinking of moving forward, I think that should be studied too before you say yes.
So just to address, and I'm going to have Tracy address this. Well, we've been very cognizant of the issues we have at Kenwood and Montgomery Road. We've done a traffic study from Galbraith to Stewart on Montgomery and from Galbraith to the highway on Kenwood. And we know we have issues.
And I believe that's on the website. It's publicly available.
Yes, it is on our website. If you, we have worked to try to get a grant to help us fix some of those problems. And unfortunately, we didn't get the last, we applied and didn't get it. But I'm going to let Tracy talk a little bit more about it because he has a little more in-depth information. Now, Tracy, you want to just fill in?
Sure. So you are correct when he said there will be no more traffic. There would be no more traffic than the last study that was done for the six-story office building. So to say there was no more traffic is basically what was going to be in the neighborhood. Obviously, there's going to be more traffic on Kenwood Road because that's the traffic that, that's where the people are going. But that's where the six-story office building, which is already approved, that's where their traffic was going to. So this isn't creating any more traffic than the six-story office building was going to create onto Kenwood Road. As Tom said, we have done a couple of studies. We are currently working on another study in conjunction with Hamlet County Planning and Zoning and with ODOT and Hamlet County Engineers. So that's going to be a study that is just now taking off because we, the last time we did this study, we came up with results. Obviously, there's a problem at the Kenwood-McGomery intersection, the Orchard and Kenwood intersection. With those intersections being so close, anybody that drives up there during rush hour has seen the backup in traffic. So there, you know, we wanted to get more people involved in this because the solutions are not easy. You know, there is property that the township owns over on Montgomery Road that we have purchased for access management to help relieve traffic problems and congestion at that intersection. And this is all the study to see what can be done, what best, what can we implement that will work the best to relieve that traffic, to get people to the highway, you know, both on Montgomery Road. There's a lot of southbound traffic that turns to go to 71 going east, and there's a lot of traffic that goes straight up to 71 South also. So that intersection is really a bottleneck because there's one left-hand turn lane, and then you've got the Orchard left turn lane if you're coming southbound, if you're going northbound. And those two left turn lanes basically run into each other, and there's no room for stacking. So that's what's creating the problem right now. And that's what this study is doing, finding a way to come up with a solution to this, to move more traffic and get more stacking.
So would it not make more sense to fix that problem first and have a plan on how to handle more traffic before we add more traffic? Because you guys have already done it once. You let this other project go, they built it, there's more people. When you have studies on how to deal with existing issues that are only being made worse. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Linda.
Hi, I'm Linda Engelhardt at 9095 Shade Tree Drive. I don't live anywhere near this, and I never go to the mall. I don't even shop in Sycamore Township, period. But I have a couple of concerns as just a concerned citizen, okay? So first, what other 10-story buildings do we have in Sycamore? And can't all firehouses, do they have the equipment to truly support this building? Big question. I don't think you have any.
The fire department has already signed off on this.
I just want to confirm that you're not going to go try to, you know, buy more equipment that this building should be paying for if they really can't manage ladders to 11 or 10-story building. And I don't think we have any now, so I want, other than the Kenwood connection, I just really am concerned. So my second one on the safety front, having taken care of multiple seniors. It is implausible that you would allow a building to be built without every elevator in it gurney-ready. You are not going to stand on the 11th floor with a heart attack patient hoping to get that one elevator to come up. It is not appropriate. Considering this is mostly residential now, every elevator in that building should be That is a big safety thing if you have particularly older people going into that building. You only have one. I mean, I, you know, I'm sorry, but I've taken care of a lot of seniors and, you know, I've had two people die waiting on an elevator in another building. So that is emotionally important to me. Also, I cannot figure out why any, so this building, the west is back onto the neighborhoods behind this building, correct?
Correct.
Why would you allow any signage on that sign? They don't need to know what businesses are in there. The houses, looking in their front yard, in their backyard, they don't need to see signs on the building. It's bad enough to see a building. But why allow signage even up to the third level?
Because I believe the apartments block that, don't they, Greg?
I don't think you can see it.
Yeah, they're five stories. So they block it. So they can't see the third story, they're not going to see the sign of three stories anyways. It's kind of a moot point.
Okay. So I'm particularly interested in this one, since I've owned many restaurants. Where is that trash being located? Is it back in the garage? Because if you were putting in two restaurants there, that's an important issue, and it's a stinky one for the neighbors behind it if it's not picked up. So where's the trash going?
It goes in the building that the restaurants are in.
Which would be this main building that we're talking about, right? So it's inside the building?
Mm-hmm. It's all been picked up.
Or is it down in the garage?
It's in the garage.
Well, I mean, it's important because you, it can't be too far into the garage because you can't get many of the big trucks in there.
We understand that, yeah.
Okay, well, that's an important one. Lastly, we've had COVID for two years. Any traffic study done in two years is hogwash. No one's gone to work for two years, for the most part. So any traffic study done while we are in limited, in-office, you know, not everybody here goes to work, but I know the people that do go to work, go to work maybe two days a week at the most. So any traffic study you're doing or have done is ineffective. It's useless. Go back before COVID and compare it. But your traffic is gone, I mean, I drive around here more now than I ever have because I used to work. Traffic's horrendous already. Traffic's going to be hell on Galbraith. When they come out of this complex, they're going to go up Happiness Way to avoid the traffic on Kenwood. They're going to go through all the neighborhoods back there just to avoid traffic on Kenwood and Galbraith. I don't think you're, I think you're cheating by giving answers that this man gave that says, oh, traffic's not going to increase. Or not, he didn't say it's not going to increase since the last study was a six-story building, office building. But you go to 10 stories and you go primarily residential, you've got a lot more traffic. You would assume you have at least two cars for everybody in that building if it's larger apartments. I don't know. I just think that the traffic study, and if you're going to do a new one, you're still in low volumes because people aren't going to work. So go back and use those studies and see, and then add, you have a sheer add. You know, there's no way it's staying the same. So you have to get real with the people and say, it is going to get better. And why allow it to be built if it's not going to be better first? Because I feel sorry for everybody in those neighborhoods behind there. People who be winding through the streets, trying to avoid the two busiest roads there. Galbraith Road's a mess every night. I mean, I do go shopping at Whole Foods sometimes when they don't deliver it to me. But Galbraith Road's a mess, and Kenwood Road's a disaster. And Montgomery Road in front of ours area, at 3:00, I just take photos of everybody that, it blocks the intersection because people from Moller don't know how to drive. So my view of traffic in Sycamore is it's a disaster. But you can't use studies for the last two years, completely invalid. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have on my list. Anybody else want to speak? Any changes of minds?
Kathy Schumaker.
Kathy, you are on the list, and you, were you sworn in?
No.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give in this public hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so if you got?
Yes.
My name's Kathy Schumaker, and I live at 4577 Orchard Lane. And I'm speaking on behalf of everybody on Orchard Lane. Does anybody else here live on Orchard Lane? We have some severe problems up here. One's traffic. We have, I had my car totaled a couple of years ago because we have no light to turn left into Orchard Lane. We can't get into our properties, starting with Thanksgiving until New Year's. You can't turn left. Someone, we have to wait till someone waves us to go into our property to get into Orchard Lane. And someone waved me once, and as I turned, there are two lanes there. The second lane, the person wasn't paying any attention and slammed right into me. We have a real problem with traffic up there. I have asked, you know, we had the big meeting up at the church not too long ago, and we talked about the residential places there on Orchard Lane. And we need lights. There's like 100 yards or so between the lights on Orchard Lane. It's very dark. And we also have to have an arrow on that streetlight because somebody's going to really get hurt, somebody besides a car. And we cannot depend on someone, you should not have to depend on someone else motioning you to turn. That's dangerous. Because you may think, well, I won't turn or I will turn. But it is a nightmare between Christmas and New Year's. And all you have to do is stand up there. And we, sometimes we have to go around and turn back into the back of our property and come back out this way rather than Kenwood Road because we can't get, we can't turn into our area. When I moved here about 20 years ago, I was so excited because I thought this is a residential area, and it's quiet, and it's nice, and has different kinds of families, and I love it back there. But it looks like, and I'm not against progress, but it looks to anyone who's just looking at this and is not associated with building this, these structures, that Sycamore Township is building a box, going down Galbraith, going down Kenwood, going down Montgomery Road, and pushing our residential areas back. Now, we don't want to be pushed back. We don't want to be pushed back to Blue Ash Road. If we wanted to live in downtown Cincinnati, we would have bought homes down there. And that's what this looks like to me. It looks like big city development. And I'm not against progress, but I'm just saying, and heaven knows that we do need more restaurants. There are no good place, well, you can eat fast food places in Kenwood, but I don't know whether, you all remember the Prime &amp; Wine years ago? Well, the Prime &amp; Wine was a place that you could go that was upscale. It was wonderful. It's gone. There really are not any really upscale restaurants left. If you want to take a family, of course, you take them to McDonald's or Wendy's or somewhere. But I think the restaurants would be a good idea. I think we have to be careful because when you turn on Montgomery Road, Orchard is just a few feet away. And people don't see us. They don't even think we exist. They turn, they go past Orchard, and here we are trying to turn to get into our, into our properties. It's very dangerous up there. And I know when you say you've done studies of traffic, it really is a nightmare around Christmas time. And we, there has to be an arrow or something. And when we had the meeting up at the church with the Sycamore employees, we were giving people suggestions as to what should be done. They were talking about putting a, turning left on Orchard and then having a separate lane to get into the church there. But nobody's done anything. I don't know, I don't know who to ask or how to follow to get that arrow, but that's really necessary. And the other thing is, there's a sign that says, do not block intersection. Well, how many people read this sign? The sign's way above the traffic. I took up on myself to take some pictures. I have several pictures of people that intersection is always blocked. So if I'm on Orchard and I'm trying to turn right to get to Montgomery Road, I can't because there's a car right there in the intersection. So nobody's reading the signs, and the signs aren't in the right place. We need signs like, they have one Happiness Way with the signal around it and down lower so people will see it. But I'm talking for everybody on Orchard Lane, and I don't want you to think I'm just here to criticize, but I want you to know what's going on up there. Somebody's going to get hurt badly. Because you can't, I can't depend on somebody waving me. You know, I depend on the traffic signs, but not on somebody waving me to turn because that's unsafe. So that's all I had to say. Speaking for the people of Orchard Lane, we are so close up there that people don't even think we exist. And I'm just... And I'm just so concerned about this residential area. I just don't want all of Sycamore Township where we, where I settled 20 years ago to look like this. I mean, it's scary when you have, you bought a house. My house is the last house on that street in Sycamore Township, which is really interesting because I'm always comparing Sycamore people with Deer Park people. I'll say, oh, they must be from Deer Park. But it's really important for the people who live on that street for safety issues. I don't like what we're doing here, but that's not, I know that progress has to be made. I just don't want to end up in my, my house on Blue Ash Road because that's not what I signed up for. I want my house in Sycamore Township where it is now, and I want to be able to come home from work, pull in there and pull in my driveway, and relax the rest of the evening. So we need, we need lighting on that street, and we also need to get an arrow so that we can turn and get that sign that says, do not block the intersection down lower. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak before we?
I'd like to say so.
Okay, if you would raise your right hand. Larry?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in this public hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, stuff you've got?
I do. My name's Mike Bresnan. I'm, my mom, Jean Bresnan, lives at 4687 Happiness Way, the corner of Happiness Way in Frolik. My mom moved in there with my father and my siblings in 68. That's 1968. She still lives there. I'm a resident of Florida for the last 26 years. I come back and I visit the community of Kenwood all the time. I'm well aware of the changes that have been made. Most recently, that new six-story apartment building, which destroyed the privacy of the residents of Frolik, Happiness Way, Marymaker, Dunedin, Orchard, Styrex. I'm not even talking about on the other side of Montgomery Road or Galbraith Road. Now you're talking about going 10 stories, four more stories higher than six, to once again destroy privacy of residential community. The traffic besides cars. Do any of you live in those areas I just talked about?
I don't. I do not.
No. So you wouldn't understand the traffic pattern. You can't imagine what the traffic pattern looks like to me from 1968 to 2024. And now you're talking about going 10 stories higher. The residential community on those eight floors or seven floors of this new building, the traffic of pedestrians and their dogs alone is just going to destroy the privacy that community has. You talk about building your dog parks. They don't use the dog park at the six-story residential now. I just don't think it's fair what you're doing to that community. Happiness Way, what's left of it. Frolik, what's left of it. Marymaker, Styrex, Dunedin, Orchard Lane. Pedestrian traffic. I don't even want to talk about the car traffic. You're kidding yourselves, and you're taking advantage of these people that are residential landowners. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak? Okay, if you want to get sworn in because I don't believe you were.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give in this public hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, stuff you've got?
I do. My name's Janelle Cronenberger. I live at 8029 Frolik Drive. And I guess, first of all, I just want to make sure, are you trustees read the email I sent?
Yes.
I know. Mr. Wheatman, there was an issue.
I don't know what happened there, but I did get it, even though you said it bounced back. I did get it.
Mr. Kellams, did you read my email?
I did.
Okay, thank you. I guess I just would like to add a few things to that. First of all, I know you were talking about the height of the Kenwood Collection in Nordstrom, et cetera. I feel like that's irrelevant to this development. You know, this development is in a block of residential, single-family homes. The Kenwood Collection is nowhere near single-family homes. So the height of that building is totally irrelevant to this. For lack of a better word, I think this is harassment. As you know, what, five years ago, when this was all presented as one big development, the Aspire, the hotel, and this building, we residents hired a lawyer, as we did back, what, 25 or 30 years ago, when we were dealing with Jewish hospitals expansion. And obviously, we residents cannot keep doing that financially. And like I mentioned in my email, in closing, you know, it's like we're the little peon residents who just get pushed away. And here we are once again. This building is way too big and way too close to Frolik and to Kenwood. I mean, the hotel is too close to Kenwood Road. It looks ridiculous. I still can't get over that that hotel was approved. And now this monstrosity. I could go on and on, but most of my concerns were really laid out in my email. And I know some of what I wrote in the email might seem really outlandish, but all of those things are happening. Holiday Acres has always been a very neighborly neighborhood. And the people who are moving in, the commercial people who are moving in are not neighborly, not neighborly. I don't know if you remember when we first started dealing with CIG. And I'm sorry, I cannot remember his name. It wasn't Mr. Fisaro, it was the guy, the younger guy with the dark hair. Do you remember how we gave out his personal phone number at one of our meetings? I don't know if anybody else has ever tried to call that, but I have, and he's never answered. So, and like I said in my email, I've tried calling the Aspire before, can never speak to a human. Leave a message for the maintenance department when something comes up, they never return my calls. I have to end up calling the police department. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Before we close, anybody else? Okay. Does the board have any other questions? Comments? If not, we will close this public hearing. Be good. Okay. It is 6:32. We're going to close this public hearing, and we will reconvene for our regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM.
Thank you all.